All those meeting in Lima City Council to order will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor McLean, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we want to thank you. We want to thank you today for all the people in our attendance tonight. It's nice to see them here, and it's, we want to thank you for our administration, as they work very hard at trying to bring bad ordinances and communications to our council people so we can make a better place to live. We also want to thank you for the sunshine we had over the weekend, because it was an excellent day to do things in your yard, and to get out with your families, and I want to thank you for my family, least of all, because my family is very important to me, and without them, I don't know where I would be today. So, thank you, Jesus, for everything that you gave us, and we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We'll have a clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lo.
Here.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. First on tonight's, are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. First on tonight's agenda is privilege of the floor, Carol Fels regarding education. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and I'll remind you that council rules allow for three minutes.
My name is Dr. Carol Fels. My address is 820 Yorkshire Drive, Lima, Ohio. The NAACP is a civil rights organization that fights for all citizens on a voluntary basis, and therefore its members are not self-serving in any manner, and take great offense to such a reference. This local unit has met with local corporations who have raised the need to concentrate on educational needs of African-Americans, which affects their economic success. The NAACP had only one meeting with school officials in which six people were present, and it did not include any city officials. After the meeting, I immediately reached out to the superintendent in another district in Ohio with similar student demographics as the Lima City Schools. He was glad to meet with me and NAACP President Ronald Fels. This superintendent stated that his local NAACP chapter approached him about the same concerns in regards to the lack of representation of African-American educators, which didn't reflect the percentages of African-American students. He expressed to us that he could not argue the point because of its accuracy. Therefore, he as superintendent personally assumed the responsibility to secure staff, which now includes 50 percent African-American educators, and includes a diverse staff in the central office. The Lima NAACP reached out to the school board to share specifically information how this superintendent accomplished the hire of more African-American educators, which have reduced suspension rates, and other strategies that they have implemented to reduce those rates, but LCS officials have chosen not to engage on five occasions. Also, this district's progress performance is better than LCS. The NAACP is actively awarding scholarships to graduating African-American students. We took students on a college tour to Central State. We have actively sought out African-American students to participate in a summer program at Ohio Northern. We have hosted a job fair in which numbers of individuals who sought employment was great, and we are actively exploring other programs. So, the efforts to halter the NAACP's progress in the community can only be a display of implicit bias to maintain status quo. The NAACP is trying to prevent a Ferguson episode in Lima, and therefore, we are speaking to city council tonight in hopes to engage city council in how we can work as a community to address these concerns. I am a national educational trainer, and over the years, I've perfected my brand to expand in various areas of curriculum and instruction. My minimum training fee is $1,500 a day. I have conducted locally training and coaching in the Shawnee Local School District, and gave them, of course, my local discount. And as you can see financially, I don't need employment with the Lima City Schools. After hearing that the Lima City Schools could not find qualified African-American applicants, I applied for two administrative positions, willing to take a cut in income, since I hold a principal's license, a permanent teaching license, a PhD in curriculum and instruction, and live in a community. But my experience is was like other African-American applicants who had applied to the Lima City Schools. Finally, every article written by the NAACP has referenced a study or publication in regards to our concerns. So, I referenced this book, "What Does It Mean to Be White?" by Dr. Robin D'Angelo. Dr. D'Angelo, who is white, has completed extensive research on the educational system in the United States. In her words, which includes a segregated staff of white educators, whose classrooms are filled with children of color, and the role white teachers play in reproducing racial inequality. Dr. D'Angelo will gladly, if requested, conduct a powerful diversity training. Also, in the meeting with Ms. Ackerman, we talked about diversity training to which she did not oppose at that meeting, which is another strategy to reduce high suspension rates of African-American students. The displays in recent events in the city of Lima suggests that diversity training from schools to city hall is needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Mr. President, Mr. Tevin.
I move that item A of the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved, and items B and C be received and filed.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve item A, and to receive and file items B and C. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development requesting legislation to, regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that communication number one, receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that communication number two be received and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Finance Director regarding the 2015 tax budget.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number three be received and filed.
Second.
I'm going to do that separately.
Motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that a public hearing on the 2015 tax budget be scheduled for June the 8th at 7:00 PM in these chambers.
Second. The motion, the second, is to schedule a public hearing for June 8th at 7:00 PM regarding the 2016 or 15? Typo. Okay, 2016 tax budget. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities regarding legislation to amend ordinance 1615.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number four be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Black &amp; Beach Corporation.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number five be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Director of Human Resources regarding life insurance for part-time employees.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo.
I move that communication number six be received and filed, and the law director be authorized to prepare necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number six, and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number seven.
From William Lyons requesting renewal of an agreement regarding bus shelters.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number seven be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number eight.
From Square Fair Inc. requesting permission to hold the toast to the city for 2015.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to approve the minutes of the Tax Incentive Review Council.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that communication number nine, receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication, I'm sorry, next is a petition.
This is an alley vacation in the 600 block of Southwest Street, petitioned for by Rosemarie Rubel.
I move that the petition be received and filed, that the law director prepare the necessary legislation, that the clerk call a publication of a legal ad and notify abiding property owner of the public hearing to be held on June the 22nd, 2015, at 7:00 PM.
Second. The motion, the second, is to...
What he said.
That this petition be received and filed, that the law director prepare the necessary legislation, and that the clerk call the publication of a legal ad notifying abiding property owners of a public hearing to be held on June 22nd at 7:00 PM. Any discussion on that? It's easier to say what he said. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Reports of officials, Howard Elstro, regarding demolitions.
Counsel, now that the snow has left us, hopefully, I know that people are getting out and about, looking at their neighborhoods, looking at their homes, looking at the problems that they have in neighborhoods, and of course, each and every spring, you receive calls from your constituents asking about the condition of various properties, and are probably interested in knowing where we are with the demolition activities for this coming year. What you have before you is the typical listing of properties that are color-coded, and the rose-colored section of properties are those which we have issued demolition orders and have funds in place to demolish. We have available to us at this time about $120,000 of community development block grant funds, and as I said, that will take care of those properties that you have listed there in front of you. The much longer list, there are four on appeal, and quite a few there which are on the demolition track, which means we've requested title information on those, we will be doing inspection on those, and we will pursue those throughout this coming year. That $120,000 is approximately enough to do about 24 properties this year. What I'd like you to do is put that in context of where we have been, and I supplied with you, in addition to the listing of properties, the page from the Public Works Annual Report citing the 2014 demolition activity, and you'll see there that approximately 79 properties were demolished last year. 10 commercial, 54 single families, two to three-family, about four units of those, and in garages. And it would interest you to understand that about 55 percent of the properties that were demolished last year were done by owners. I think this is quite a bit of improvement that we've seen in the past, and that is because we've been able to use NSP dollars, Attorney General Fund dollars, to take down many, many properties, but property owners are now understanding that there is no free ride, and that it is their responsibility, and oftentimes, now when we send these demolition orders to the property owners, they take action before we get there, and that is welcome. So, keep in mind that all we have to work with this year are the Attorney General, or excuse me, are the block grant funds. We do not have access to the Attorney General Funds any longer, except for some program funds, funds that we are collecting from property owners paying their bills to the city of Lima for those demolitions, and we do not have NSP funds any longer. It may interest you that DCD has done some fairly thorough analysis of the demolition problem, and I, perhaps Amy Odom would want to come back and provide you another update at a later time about the complexities of the housing stock in Lima, and how many properties are yet to be demolished. What I can tell you from gleaning from those reports is that over the past six years, about 616 properties have been taken down with AG money, and block grant money, and the NSP dollars. About 266 of those properties were taken down by private entities. So, that is at least a bit of optimism that private owners are finally stepping up and taking care of these properties. As we say that, Community Development Department has noted that there is a need to take down 500 additional properties, and that will not be possible with the meager funds that we have from the block grant, and keep in mind that we have no other resources to demolish houses. So, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer.
I have one, Howard. Could you clarify, the pink is, we have orders and we have funds. The four that are on appeal, should the city prevail in that appeal, do we have the funds to do those?
No.
Okay. I wasn't sure if it was included in that.
No, and I will qualify that unless some of those in that top section fall out and are picked up either somehow by the private owner or fire bonds and such.
Okay.
So, realistically, the pink is all we have funds for.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Lo.
Mr. Howard, of that total $120,000 that you had given, is any of that NSP?
No, that's all block grant funds. Well, with the exception of two properties. Two of those properties in the pink section can be picked up by the NSP money rolling in from the assessments that we are collecting, or through payment plans that previous properties tore down with NS funds.
Mr. President.
Just a moment, Mr. Glenn.
One more question. I had, I had inquired about the property on Hollis Street, the apartments. I believe you had told me at that time it's about $44,000 to get that side down.
Yes.
Is, I don't see it on the list anyway.
It is not on the list.
Can you explain why?
Well, it's not in the pink section. Whether it's in the blue section...
I don't see it nowhere.
It is not. If you'll give me that address again, we will again pursue that.
Thank you.
Mr. Glenn.
Now, Howard, in the light blue section, you're working on getting money for it, right? That's my understanding, right?
No.
You already got money for these?
We do not have, any of those in the blue section, we do not have funds for.
Well, that'd be able to come in, and next, money coming in for CEG, the next money that'll get coming in?
That will be up to the discussions that the community and council has about this current allocation, of which, part of the community development are just now beginning to initiate.
Okay. And I just want to send out an echo out there for the folks, and I see a lot of folks who pay for their houses, they're setting up with the law director, payments, and the folks that are doing that, really appreciate that, because this would give us more money to take down more, sabotaged houses that are tearing our neighborhoods down, you know, and a few people I've seen, they're willing to continue making payments, and the law director's working with them on these payments. So, I hope to continue seeing folks that continue doing that. This is the first time I've seen a lot more people than I've seen over the years that start doing that, after their houses get tore down, they still want their property, they didn't want the city to take their property, or they set up payment plans to get it down. Because this money goes out real fast, though, you know, but I'm hoping that, that we get some of these eyesores that in the area, in the six ward is down, though, but, you know, we'll see what we can do in the future there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo.
I got one more question. Howard, going back to the apartments on Hollis Street, that's been a priority for a long time, and how do we determine which houses get taken down first? Is that clear of all legal paperwork?
The properties that rise to the top of the list are done so by assessment by the Building Department. So, of all the calls that come in, Bill Brown or his inspector go out and look at all the properties, and they move forward with the ones which are the most severe problems at the time. The only thing that will, you'll see that may jump over that list is due to a fire. If a fire is so severe that it becomes structurally unsafe, then those are taken down as emergencies, and let's say we had three emergency fires, three structures which were so severely destroyed by fire that they were ready to collapse, then those three would probably, and if there's no insurance money, those three would probably be taken down. Instead of 21 properties in that pink section, well, three of those would have to drop off and wait for the next allocation.
Understood. But the reason why I'm asking is because there's so much graffiti. We can only send people out there so many times to repaint it. All the windows up top are out, every bird, rat, possum, beaver, everything else is up there. Okay, I'm just saying, there's kids in that neighborhood, there's a lot of kids in that neighborhood, and it's turning into the clubhouse from the backside.
Thank you.
Okay, there are no resolutions this evening. Ordinance one, I'm sorry, ordinance 8415?
Authorizing the mayor to terminate an easement agreement established in ordinance number 12755.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that we place ordinance 84-15 on third reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to place ordinance 8415 on third reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Ordinance 9015.
Leaving special assessments for property maintenance code charges on premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 9015 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 9015 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 9015 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 9115.
Amending the 2015 annual budget.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that ordinance 9115 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 9115 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 9115 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 9215.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a licensing agreement with Lyons Industries, Inc., DBA, the chief design shop company.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that ordinance 92-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 9215 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo.
I'd like to thank Mr. Lyons for his diligent work. He's the individual, for those that don't know, who's provided his shelters at the bus stops. He recently did some maintenance and cut it where it could be handicapped accessible also, so I want to thank him at this time publicly, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Lo. Is there any further discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 9215 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 9315.
Authorizing continuation of and amendments to the following enterprise zone and community reinvestment area agreements based on the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Council.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 9315 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 9315 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yeah.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 9315 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 9415.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the regeneration of the granular activated carbon contractors.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 9415 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 9415 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 9415 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 9515.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Black &amp; Beach Corporation.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that, excuse me, ordinance 9515 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 9515 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 9515 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 9615.
Amending ordinance 4714.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 9615 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance ninety-six fifteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-six fifteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance ninety-seven fifteen.
Repealing section four-five-two-point-oh-five-one of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe?
I move that ordinance ninety-seven fifteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance ninety-seven fifteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-seven fifteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. There are miscellaneous business, Mr. McLean.
Thank you, Mr. President. I got a couple items, um, if we have this young lady that's in our Northside Neighborhood Association, her name is June Blaveld. Dave and June, Dave's her husband, have been, uh, volunteer inside the city limits and for about every other organization that there ever has. And I, and I want to say that she has received an award from Apollo Adult Education. Uh, it's an Ohio Association for Adult and Continuing Education. It's a Sharon Davis Stube Award, uh, for the state of Ohio. Uh, she was honored last Friday in Dublin with a luncheon and a banquet. And just for your information, she was a Shirley Daley Neighborhood Leadership Award and the Ohio Citizen of the Year Award by the National Association of Social Workers. So, uh, if you see June, pat her on the back, tell her to keep up the good work because we need more people like her in the city limits. We really do. She's a great volunteer. Her husband and her work diligently. As a matter of fact, we, uh, we're working together Saturday. Uh, we had the dumpsters out at Saint Gerard's. Man, were the people pouring in. We were busy. Uh, I don't know how many they ended up with before I left. I was tired and we had too full, so, and that, and I want to tell you a little bit about Allen County Refuge because they came out with all of their forces. They brought dumpsters, they brought trucks, they helped, they brought water, they brought T-shirts for people. They were a shining star. And they, all of you have to remember that that continues through the rest of the month. And we're going to take one little weekend off, but we have May ninth, we have May sixteenth and May thirtieth. And the sites are on the website, so gather up your goodies that you don't want anymore and put them in a truck, trailer car. I've seen people on top of cars bringing stuff. Bring it out, get rid of it. It cleans our city up and what better time to do it? Nice spring, clean up. So, thank, uh, everyone that helped us on Saturday and I tell you, that was astounding how much that we pulled out of there, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Lowe?
Thank you, Mr. President. I only have one thing, um, to the individuals that are here, listeners at home, uh, again, not to boast, but I'm going to state a fact. Uh, the high-octane drum line is doing very, very well. We're being very, very successful with the young men who have came out wanting to learn, read, write, play music. Our doors are open to anyone in this public, in our public, uh, the county actually, not just the city of Lima. Uh, we range from age seven to seventeen, and then we have one young lady who is forty-seven, I believe.
Young lady?
Uh, she's doing very, very well. So, um, again, Bradfield Center, six to seven P.M. every single Tuesday. Please come out and join us. Uh, I would also like to say the individuals that came in, uh, when we went into the schools looking for kids, uh, a lot of them were labeled to class clowns. And these individuals have turned from DNF students to A and B students. Ninety percent of our kids are on the honor roll and those that are on the honor roll are three-point-four and higher. Okay? So, working with Lima City Schools, Bath Parish, Shawnee, Elida, uh, Air Force, LCC, um, we've had great support also from the Bradfield Center, um, and, and their maintenance man, Mr. Jimmy Oglesby. He's, he's always been there for us, so, uh, hats off to them. But again, we keep saying we have nothing for our kids to do, there is things for our kids to do. Everybody can't run a football or shoot a basketball. So we just ask that you come out, uh, listen, maybe one practice. You don't have to join that day, but listen, uh, kind of see what we have to offer and we can move for there. If we can't help you, then we can send you to other individuals who are also doing great things in the city of Lima. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Mr. Tevin?
A few things this evening. The Boulevard Neighborhood Association, uh, last Saturday filled four dumpsters up with the citywide pride day. So it is, it is a great opportunity to, uh, get rid of unneeded items and, and tidy the city up. Uh, the Boulevard Neighborhood Association will have their May meeting, uh, tomorrow night at seven P.M. at the Community Resource Center, fourteen forty West Spring Street. The speaker will be Lieutenant Ron Holman from the Lima Police Department. He will be address, addressing, uh, the Neighborhood Association with area statistics and there's, there will be an opportunity to ask questions related to, uh, the Neighborhood Association area specifically. Uh, the next item that I have, I have, I have talked several times about the issue of parking violations within the city where people are parking in front lawns and on islands and, uh, everywhere but in a driveway. Uh, and I've had, uh, lengthy discussions with the law director. I've spoken with the mayor. I've spoken with, uh, Chief Martin, uh, Amy Odom and Howard Ostrow. And, uh, there, I, I want to see a change that will help change the behaviors and give us quicker reaction when we get calls as council members or the city gets a call, uh, about these issues. The issues that are being handled now is property maintenance issues. It, it is very time-consuming and, uh, not the best process, I believe, to handle it. So the change that, that I'm recommending is that, that these offenses be changed to ticketable offenses and that in addition to police officers being able to issue these tickets, that the park rangers have the authority to issue these tickets and that the property maintenance inspectors have the ability to issue these tickets. Um, I do believe that, uh, this should go to the Safety Services Committee for discussion and review, but it is something, when we look at this time of year, that it's important, uh, that we get moving on it. And I would, uh, in conjunction, I, I, so I, I will move that this issue be referred to the Safety Services Committee.
Second.
Do you want to? The motion, the second, is to refer the issue as described by Counselor Tevin to the Safety Services Committee. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, the only thing I would, I would add to it is it's, it's the issue of, uh, in, in that meeting, and, and Tony, if I need to change the motion, let me know. But in that meeting, I, in, in talking to other council members, uh, some want to be brought up to speed on what is currently permitted by law, where parking areas are. Another concern that was raised was the issue of, uh, if someone goes out and pours a pad in their front yard or they throw stone in their front yard, you know, what are the, the controls in place? And I would like for this committee to discuss those, you know, as, as needed in conjunction with this. Just wanted to clarify that.
Is there any further discussion? I, I guess the, the thing that I want to ask is, um, I know you want to get it expedited and would it be wise to go ahead and for council to authorize the legislation now knowing that the issue's going to be reviewed by council hopefully before the next meeting?
Uh, it, it could happen one of two ways. The mayor has, has agreed to authorize the legislation.
Okay.
Uh, the law director has indicated that by our next council meeting, he believes he can have legislation ready. Uh, it would give the committee, which I think Mr. Gordon is going to schedule a meeting next week, an opportunity to look at it and if there are any rocks in the road or a need to, uh, delay it, we could always, when it comes to us, put it on second reading, uh, to make sure that we've got, uh, everything in order before it goes into place. And this, one of the things that Ann Miles said to me during this discussion that I had with her about this issue, uh, is the public education piece of it, which I think is very important. And, and one of the things I would recommend to the committee or just add to it is, uh, we probably would want to start out with a, a period of, say, thirty days where we're issuing warning tickets before we, and, and, and publicize it through the mayor's press conference, through GTV two, through our council meetings and these discussions and get the word out there that the enforcement is coming. We, we've done that with other items and it gives the public an opportunity to get up to speed and, and understand it, so.
Okay. All right. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
And, and the other thing on that issue, I would ask that the mayor would authorize the legislation to be prepared, uh, for our next council meeting. Um, the second item that I, I, I've talked about and been involved in and we all deal with it, uh, I look at the city of Lima and I look at the last fifty years and I look at how the complexion of the city has changed relative to owner-occupied, uh, housing and rental units. And although we have changed and, and the number of rental units has increased dramatically as a percentage of our housing stock, our regulations dealing with it and our zoning regulations have not changed to keep up with, with, uh, with the way our city has changed. So this issue is going to be more of a long-term discussion because there are a lot of tales to this one that, uh, we need to understand. I don't think we're in a position to, uh, completely rewrite our zoning ordinances or code, uh, but I do think we're in a position to look at these individually and see where we might improve it to make it more relevant to what our community looks like today. So I would move that the issue of, uh, of zoning relative to, uh, properties within the city of Lima be referred for review to the Public Works Committee.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to refer the issue of zoning as it relates to property use inside the city of Lima be referred to the Neighborhood Concerns Committee?
Public Works.
Public Works Committee.
And the reason, the reason...
Is there any discussion?
Excuse me, the reason I asked for Public Works was we used to have a building planning and zoning committee, which when we reduced the number of wards, we did away with that committee. The zoning items went to the Public Works Committee. So I, I think that's appropriate that, that, uh, that where, where it should end up.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President, is it...
Go ahead.
Is the motion solely to deal with it as a zoning matter or a broader review in terms of rental housing regulation?
That's a very good question, Mayor. I, I, and, and again, Tony, you could help me with the wording on the motion. I want all those items to be available for the committee to discuss.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, I think the, uh, motion made by Mr. Tevin was sufficient to encompass the issues raised by Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Adams?
Mayor asked my question about the rental property.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tevin. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, maybe this is an indication about tomorrow, but, um, I'd like to remind everyone to vote tomorrow. Um, expecting a, a low turnout. We only have one issue in the city of Lima to, uh, vote on. Uh, others may have, uh, school, uh, renewals to look at, so please, uh, take the time to vote. Um, also, I would like to mention, uh, we have an upcoming citywide pride cleanup, um, on May sixteenth from nine to noon at Unity Elementary School, uh, sponsored by, uh, Hope Neighborhood Association. And as the other counselors have mentioned, please gather your items, um, and bring those to the dumpster to help clean up the neighborhoods. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
Yes, got a couple things here. Uh, Thursday, uh, May the fourth?
Seven.
May the seventh. May seventh, we'll be having a CBG meeting there doing the application. I'll have Amy come up and explain a little bit about that. She will explain to you what the process going to be, the application and everything.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Councilmembers, um, tonight actually was our very first, um, community meeting to talk about the five-year, the formation of the five-year plan and the one-year action plan or funding plan for the first year of that five-year plan. Mr. Glenn is graciously reminding people that if they would like to apply for CBG funds, there is an application briefing, um, this Thursday at seven o'clock at five-thirty. Um, and the deadline for submitting those applications is May twenty-second. You can get applications online, um, or you can receive them at the meeting on May seventh at five-thirty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, May the sixteenth, uh, we will have a cleanup that, that's out to be sponsored by the Southside Neighborhood Association. This will be at the Forest Street Missionaries Baptist Church. It's very important that we are trying to get out there, clean up, get all this stuff together. Uh, we doing a couple of things you need. We getting, hitting these alleys pretty tough there and we get some trucks donated so we can get around all the alleys. Uh, this past weekend, I've been estimating what need to be done, uh, garbage back there in some of the areas. I've noticed some in the backyard of Forest Houses and had opportunity to talk to some so we can bring them out, we can pick them up and as long as you help us out. And anything with steel, we're going to try to keep because we want to make sure we have enough money to send people to the neighborhood conference in Bowling Green, Kentucky in October. So the ones who cannot afford to pay, we're going to try to use some of that money there. We're going to keep all the steel ourselves and we're going to go back and sell any steel stuff come in. So that's kind of what they're working on, doing fundraisers so you can make sure everybody want to go to the conference in Bowling Green, Kentucky, be able to go. Also, on May the thirtieth, Martin McKean Neighborhood Association will have another cleanup day. So we got two cleanup, three altogether, Ms. Adams, then Hope, and then you got Southside, then you got Martin McKean. So we're going to make sure that we get everything cleaned up. No one should have any problem with code enforcement saying, I left that back there. I didn't have no money, get rid of it. We got opportunity to get rid of all that stuff back there. We're going to have plenty of help. We ask for more volunteers. I should never say plenty of help, but we need more and more volunteers to help us out with everything. And I love to hear good things about kids. With Jesse talking about the kids, how the grades went up, that is a win-win. And it excites me so much when I hear kids are doing great. Kids is our future. We're going to take ten kids to vote for the first time. You know, ain't nothing much on the ballot, but you only have to see part. They're going to be able to vote. They just turned eighteen years old. I'm going around, pick them up, and we're going to go do it. And I'm so happy about that, that we'll be able to take them. Then we're going to be running, start running voter registration. That's very important. Voting is our weapon. And people don't understand that. Come out and vote. You dictate what goes on in your community. So we got to get a lot of people registered to vote. You know, we just don't vote during, when the president time. We need to vote during this time of the year. Then we can speak loud and clear what we want done here, okay? So we starting with eighteen years old. We need to get everybody rallied around, get them ready to vote. Very important to get that done. Primary, I know a lot of, not that many people go out and vote, but we're going to get it, we're going to start getting it going on now. So if any of you got some young eighteen-year-old kids, it's an opportunity to get them out there so they can learn. Ain't got that much on the ballot, go in there with them, get the voting done. My parents did me the same way. Got me in there and, and I'm doing a favor to other kids, but it's important. Also, we are, we got, we, the Rent-A-Kid program is back again, but I'm handing it over to someone else now. So I'm working with this person with it because due to my parents been kind of sick under weather there. We spend a lot of time, my father there right now. So we're going to try and work on it. We can't take on that many kids this year because she says she can handle a small amount. But we get volunteers to help them, it'd be great. But at least, at least five or six volunteers to come out and help them. And you got to go out to the kids, psychs with them. Because it's all about training the kid, what work is all about. And that's what I want to do all the time. And I've got a lot of success story. I can sit up here all night and talk about the kids that's been involved with the Rent-A-Kid program, not what they doing now. You know, how they handling the job at Ford right now, how they handling the job at Dana, how they handling the job at Husky. These are some of the good things that happen when the kids get their first job. I always tell my kids, my first job was at Doc Stener. I painted at Fitz. Thirteen years old being Isaac Olmer. I got fired, they're going to kick the paint over. You know? So that's when we first, that's where I first met Isaac. So, but that's what it did. But I tell kids that all the time, but we got to work on, work with our youth. And, and I'm not going to talk about what happened this past Friday. And because I went to the mayor office, talked to him Thursday, then all this come out Friday. But we're going to work on it. We don't need to rehash down the stuff back up. Just all we got to do is, is keep praying and working with our youth. We got a lot of work to do in our community. And I mean, we can't, we can't just point at one person doing it. We all, these are kids, these all our family members that doing things like this. But we need to work with them though. We don't want them going to prison. I got two brothers in prison that I hurt my mom every day to think about it. But that's what they're going to go to, is hurts. So we got to try to work with our kids. And we got a lot of peoples here tonight. We got to work with our kids. We got the final solution to it. Leaks is out now, but we got to come together and find solutions, you know? Kids talk about jobs, I work hard getting a job, whatever they need to do. But education, like Jesse says, things to do in this community. They say nothing to do, get in the drum line. You know, get, get involved with playing, get involved with the playground program. You know, there's a lot of good things going on in our community though. Take the time out. You don't have to sit out there and hang around and walk around and find things to get into. You can get some positive things in our community. And we, everybody just keep continuing bringing things on. It don't cost much money. We are, we are putting scholarships together, trying to pay for the kids to go this summer. Doing all we can for that. Anytime a parent call me, say they got it, I find ways to get in it. I call companies up and get it. If you need paint, I'm running, I'm working on bringing paint to you so you get your houses painted. I'm still working, trying to do that program again. I just met with the company already. They already said they willing to help out, but we don't know how many houses are going to be able to do this this year. But these are some of the positive things we're going to continue doing in our community. They're going to take all of us to work to make our, change our community around. We just can't keep pointing at people saying, you got to do it, you got to do it. He responsible. We all responsible. Look in the mirror, I'm responsible for it. All of us is. So let's work together. We don't want to see these kids hurting each other, going to jail, getting in trouble. So that's what we want to see there. But I'm, please, everybody come out and help out with cleanup. I see through, I went through a lot of areas this past weekend. Don't tell me nature stuff, it's all in there. Then when they give you a fine, you got to pay the seventy-five dollars. Then you're going to say, I ain't have nobody to clean it up. But we got all these opportunities laying here. All these opportunities. And you can go, you can cross over on West Side, throw stuff away. Just get it, something to get it done. But we got all these opportunities to clean up. And it's seventy-five dollars. If you get, if you don't get, you get a letter in the mail, you got to pay it. I can't waive it off. So let's get this stuff done and make our, and clean up these alleys and make our property look good the best we can. You need help, I'll try to get you some help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Mrs. Miles?
Thank you. I also want to say kudos to June Blaveld. June and I, our families were raised up on the east side of town together here. So I know June very well here. So she even babysat my younger brothers and sisters. So I really applaud her and I know that she's a great servant here. So I really, really appreciate her work in the community. Election Day tomorrow, as everyone has already mentioned here, let's get out and vote here. Let's always exercise our right to vote, no matter what's on the ballot here. I tell my kids all the time, I don't, you know, it's the election day, you need to be out there. I don't care if there's little or much, just exercise your right to vote here. Also, on Thursday, May seventh, is National Day of Prayer. I'm asking everyone here if you are available on Thursday to go out to UNOH. Now, before it was held at the Memorial Hall, but now it's held at the UNOH Event Center. And this is on Cable Road and the start time is eleven forty-five to one. We need to pray. We need to come together as a community and pray for our country, pray for our state, and pray for our city. We all know what's going on around our country. There's a lot of violence, there's a lot of killing, and we know what's going on in our city here. So if you are available on Thursday, come out for an hour, take an early lunch or late lunch, and come out to UNOH and be a part of a group of community leaders who will be out praying for everything in this community, from, from our city leaders to our police officers, to our firefighters, to everyone. Just come in and for one hour, let us be united as one and pray together as a city for all the things that are going on in our city here. And there is power in prayer. So again, eleven forty-five to one P.M. at UNOH on Cable Road. And I really thank Teresa Lee for all that she does every year to plan this event here. She has a variety of people that's going to be on the dock and people from all walks of life, from all churches, from all organizations that will be, that will be there on the National Day of Prayer. So for one hour, let us unite in prayer and be as one. Also, the Westside Neighborhood Association will be meeting on Sunday, May seventeenth, at six-thirty P.M. The officer that's speaking will be speaking about home security. How to secure your home to make sure that, you know, minimize the impact of someone breaking in or whatever. So again, Neighborhood Association, and the meeting will be held at the Chamberlain Huckery Funeral Home on Cable Road at six-thirty P.M. on Sunday, May seventeenth. And that's all I have, Mr. President.